Everything has to go out the window. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Merrick Board of Trustees, April thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Budget work session. I need a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, tonight we're gonna be discussing. We're really gonna be discussing Harbor Island Park and all the department heads will make that such a fantastic place for our community. And the first up is the Director of Recom- Recommendation, the Director of Recreation, Mr. Jason Pindell.
The buttons on the side of it.
Hello?
We're gonna have to get clipped here for a while.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We did a little presentation tonight. There it is. For our fiscal year twenty three budget. So look, I can go over the next slide, Dan.
I'm just, I'm gonna share the screen, so it's on the Zoom.
Yep, looks good, thanks.
Okay, so basically just a little background for the folks at Roma's, as Mr. always says, of what we do. So the mission is to preserve, enhance, and inspire a healthy lifestyle that enriches the mind, body, and spirit of quality, affordable recreation programs, writing outstanding parks, facilities, and services. And our goal is to provide this for all our residents regardless of where they come from. And with you, we want to provide it for them. Race, stability, age doesn't matter. My staff, a lot of you have met, it's myself, Ali, our Recreation Leader, two Recreation Assistants, Diane and Donna, and Charles is our Office Assistant. He does both parks and everything. The next page, just an overview of our parks so everyone can see. That will be our parkland. So in the village, we have one hundred nineteen acres of parkland that we manage in total. Forty-four and change of that is Harbor Island Park. So that's our biggest park. Followed by Lawrence and then Stanley. Okay, so just some quick facts about our past year and that folks at home might not know. So athletic fields, meaning youth sports permits were two thousand three hundred seventy-two hours, and that was all in the harbor. We had over twenty thousand beach visitors in the two-day season. We parked over thirty thousand cars in the harbor through that time, quite a bit. And we had thirty community events planned annually with all different departments and groups and organizations. So there's five point nine acres of parkland per one thousand residents. We have about twenty thousand residents and hundred and ninety acres, so that's that map. And then some facts about the Parks Department. There's over a hundred forty-four acres of both properties are mowed, grass areas. They do five, we have five miles of sidewalks that the Parks Department maintains. So it's about fourteen acres, ten staffs under that we have. And about a half month for staff members, so it's sort of a bit of maintaining that the Parks Department does.
Nice.
This is some of the beautification that we've done over those past years. So we've implemented a natural turf maintenance program on our athletic fields in the harbor. If you've been out there this spring, they're looking good. Best I've seen them. In my eight years here.
Natural turf, you mean we're not using chemicals?
It's all natural. Jeff could explain a little bit more. Yeah, it's all natural and you can explain about that. We converted our Lanza Field, old halogen bulbs to LED, then we worked on approving that project, so that makes it a lot more affordable and a lot of youth groups are able to use it where, as before, we weren't able to. And we can turn them on and off from anywhere in the world, so we don't have to pay overtime to do that, which is a huge save for defense. We, the Parks Department ran water lines all the field, which we never had in the harbor before, so now they're great to order that like they should be ordered.
Sorry.
We, also the board approved a dog park, which is almost completed, and the Parks Department did that all in-house and built it in-house, which we're getting to an opening date on May twentieth. So that's also something we did. We also installed Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi side, blue-too irrigation controls, similar to light, so that they can be chilled remotely and programmed remotely. And that's for all the municipal buildings, not just like the harbor, because the Park Department maintains all those sprinkler systems and grass areas as well. What do we do in our parks and around our village? We fabricate and install holiday decorations. I think during Christmas, you'll see them. During the fall, you'll see them, and a lot of that stuff is done in-house and by the Parks Department. This year, we averaged around twenty moral bench donations. You guys know, I think, almost every other meeting, we get one. So there's a lot of generous folks that help, you know, chip into making the harbor beautiful with all those new benches. The Parks Department planted two hundred thirty-four trees in-house. So that's a significant tree program. Jeff can go into more detail. I'm just highlighting, you know, stuff that we've done. We renovated and installed at one sixty-nine the Poetry Garden, which wasn't there, and that's beautiful. Every, I feel like there's a lot of donations hardworking to that, but every spring, we added something this year was the poetry letters and the previous year was the sculptures and so that place is really looking beautiful. We've also, the Parks Department designed and installed more swing bench, swinging benches in the park. You know, you'll see those along West Basin Wall, and those were crumbling, and we got those back to life. And one of the bigger ones is we repaved the Harbor Island parking lot, which was big. I mean, I don't know how many years, but a long time. We had pop, free and looking good. So just some quick facts about, you know, things that we do. So based off our budgets this year, it's about a hundred fourteen dollars per resident to do parks and recreation, myself and Jeff on budget. So we do, I feel like we do a lot without asking for a whole lot, and we also offset with revenues. So we have, based off our twenty thousand residents, we have about one thousand three hundred thirty-three residents per park. I think we have fourteen, twelve parks. We do a ton of special events, Turkey Truck, we had a twelve hundred thirty-seven runners. We do four movies in the park, four parades on Merrick Avenue. We do seven concerts and musical performances, not only the harbor, but throughout other parks with the Arts Council. And another quick fact, a four-time tennis level, our annual license date was going to clear it out and change, which folks ask all the time, so I wanted to highlight that here. And this is gonna segue into the special event, so we just did a quick, you know, special event budget page here, but this year we've incorporated a full special event budget into the village's annual budget. So the next slide, you'll see we put a calendar together. We listed everything of what we're doing this year, and that will coincide with the seven-five-five-zero budget, which I believe everyone has. So that's kind of an overview of what we do. If you want to do specifics about the special events or questions about the special events, they're all on the calendar. Ask away. You want to go into the Recreation Department line, whatever you guys want to do, but that's my presentation.
I just got a question. I know we increased the number of scholarships for the camp. Were they all utilized?
Yes, Mayor. So this camp year is about ninety-eight percent full. We gave up twenty-six scholarships. Board of Directors, twenty-five, but I got one additional that I asked Jerry for, so we have twenty-six scholarships already for camp. All village residents.
Is it?
And we worked to somehow get those scholarships. So some folks come to the Recreation Department, very few, I will say. We work with the Community Resource Center and the School District Guidance Council, Ryanneck of Merrick, and they give us the kids that they feel need to have that need, and it's based off pre-launch in the school system, so we don't have to look at, you know, tax forms and figure all that out. You know, we let the school vet the kids that really need it, and they bring them to us.
Other kids that are getting served?
Is there more to that, an event above the twenty-five? Yes. Is, is it, what, what number would you put on that? I'd say we could have given, oh, the ones that I know, I'd say we could probably get an easy eight to ten more this year.
Thank you. No, I, listen, you're bringing in revenue, you're doing a great job. You know, the programming for recreation has never been so robust. The beach looks great all the time, and I know it's something both of you work on together. And then the staff at the beach is phenomenal. You know, as you know, I go down there every weekend and e- either they radio ahead and they all look on a ball.
When I get there?
Or they're all on a ball all the time?
I will say, Mayor, sometimes we have to tell some of our new staff who the mayor is. A lot of the kids who work with us are between sixteen and eighteen.
I wouldn't expect, I'd be worried about them if they knew who I was.
When we tell them the mayor, they don't forget, and they don't. Thank you all for the support.
Jason, Mayor, Chief DeRosa is there. Either she's interested or she was asked to come. I'm not sure.
I want to. So you're just as part of. If you needed any of my, regarding the celebrations budget, that was the topic. As part of the celebration budget, it includes parks, overtime, as well as things part of it.
But that's included in your budget too, right, like the overtime?
So traditionally, yes, it had been part of my individual PD overtime budget. What they wanted to do was take that and move it into the celebration budget to see actually how much overtime for these celebrations it costs the PD, and it works out to about sixty-eight thousand dollars per year.
Raids and.
Yeah.
We're a town that likes to party.
Oh, that's reimbursed because it's, and some of it's the village's obligation, right?
Like fourth through July is not reimbursed?
No, 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 but in some cases, we get their permits.
So for the police department, that doesn't get reimbursed. That's all straight overtime for parades and things of that nature, but some things like the Turkey Truck, there is some revenue from that for the tickets, all the tickets that.
Yeah, we, we. So in terms of reimbursement for Police Department, it wouldn't be for a parade or something, but let's say someone wants to rent the park and they want a police overtime, we would charge them that, and then Chief would give us the officer, and then we would bill them whatever they hourly. Same with like a movie shoot or something, something along those lines, but the parades, no.
But not our events?
No, not our, yeah, not our events.
Or movies or?
Yeah, I mean, for the movies and stuff, I will say the PD knows about everything. There's a weekly blast that goes out, you all get it. And not everything gets a police officer, but they are aware. Like a movie night, we don't need a stationed police officer, where some other things regular.
So events like that will use PD staff that's on hand to participate, go down and spend some time in the movie or at the concert or something like that.
Bicycle cop. Anybody have questions for?
Mayor, if I may, there is, there is. So we have discussed at the board level, the Park Rangers and some of the questions that Deputy Deputy Mayor Lou had regarding the hours and observation times of the parks, but we do have a new park. We have a Bark Park now that the Chief and Jason and Jeff and I discussed. Maybe for the first year, trying to add an attendant there. Because there's gonna be a lot of people who are going to just walk up and expect to just go in and use the dog park, when in fact, our process has to be that they have to be registered, the dog has to be licensed, then we have to give them a key fob, and they have to pay for all of that. So Jay and Chief, if you want to articulate a little bit about what we discussed at the at the meeting, whenever it was, either this week or last week, I don't recall.
I'll just speak to them from the recreation perspective. So Gary did ask us to look into hiring an attendant, which we're working on. Now, it's not currently in this budget, but it might need to be added, but it's something like eight thousand dollars for a part-time salary for the summer months. We just feel like we just need some eyes on it. We don't know what to expect, so we just want to, you know, monitor it, see what busy times are, what not busy times are, making sure people have their fobs, their proper identification, and they're following the rules. Luckily, the harbor's, the dog park is very close to my office, so we can take a ride down in the golf cart and check it out. I'm sure people will also call the office if they see something. And we feel that an attendant would just help us enforce the rules a little bit in the beginning. In terms of the process, I know a lot of folks at home have been asking about, like, how, when, where? We're very close. I'm hoping by the end of next week, we should have it out in the eBlast informational flyers about what, how you do it, and where you go, and how much it costs. We've, we have detailed information internally by staff, but now we should have it printed up and make sure it looks nice for the public. So we have been working internally over the last couple of months, multiple meetings, to try to hammer this, hammer down the rules, regulations, and where you go and purchase it, what you need.
And I know we have the grand opening set for the twentieth. Will there be a soft opening part to that, so we're not surprised by the unforeseen difficulties that inevitably will crop up?
I will leave that to Mr. On, because I don't know what his schedule is. It's not a new week yet. We're still working on it. I don't know. Certainly, we can try it if it's ready.
Yeah, and in other words, just like, just when people show up, and if they, you know, then, the other thing I have is inevitably, people will show up without the fob. And we won't know. Will we have a way to expedite the process with like a clipboard with an application, a place that they can go and, you know?
So right now, we're, they're gonna be going to the clerk treasures office to get it, because that's where you have to get your dog license. The attendant is gonna be able to have information. Listen, this is where you go to get it. Here's the flyer, one-page flyer, right up the street to Village Hall. This is what you need. It's gonna say you need rabies, whatever you need, your license, rabies vaccination, and your your license, and that's it. We haven't discussed, like, having a way to let people in on the fly.
Well, I don't know if that's even appropriate or advisable, but.
It would be, Lou, it would be, it would be from nine to five, Monday to Friday, right? So the problem is gonna be on weekends, but from Monday to Friday, they can walk up to the clerk treasures office and get their dog registered and then purchase the dog license and the key fob. What I won't bend on is having dogs there without a dog license, because a dog license requires shots and vaccines to make sure. So that's really why we're tying the two processes together. When I built the other dog park at my former municipality, the only way we could have some assurance that the dogs at least were vaccinated and properly licensed was to tie the two together. So there will be some disgruntledness maybe on weekends, but we'll try to push this out as much as possible to pre-register as many people as possible. And in fact, Sally was able to explain who's not here tonight, but she was able to explain that things can be done online if they need to. So it's not much of an inconvenience, it's just the fact that our normal business hours are nine to five, Lou, so that's real.
And maybe we can, you know, figure some volunteers or whatever to hang around there on the weekends, to hand things out. I mean, I'd be happy to do it for a while. And just instruct people and soften that problem.
So I tie in, if I could, one last second, if I tie in the chief here, because inevitably, we will have, and the mayor has had experience with some of, you know, the one percent of the dog owners who really don't want to comply with our rules at Harbor Island Park. And so inevitably, we will have to call the police to deal with situations where people, you know, give our attendant or our park staff, you know, Jason, Jeff, or anyone else a hard time. So that's why I recommend that we consider having the attendant. The attendant would be able to contact either Richie Bell, who was our, who was our police officer down at the park during the summer, or, you know, of course, the one-one-two-two number, and have an officer respond if they're available, just to just to mitigate the situation.
And we'll have, and we'll have somebody there on, for the grand opening to hand out. Yeah, okay, good.
Does the Board of Trustees have to approve any fee for this, if there's a fee? Because if we do, maybe we should do it next Monday.
Hey, Dan, did we put the increase fee for the dog park and the license in the fee schedule, or is that promulgated by the man, the manager?
Well, the license is, that's a state fee.
Okay.
So that's not that you have to do anything with that. I'll check on the other item.
I don't think so. If we have to, so maybe we need to do that on Monday, because we have a budget.
Because I remember, I have my own thoughts about that. I think it should, I think everybody should pay, and everybody, everybody who has license should be allowed in. So, but we can talk about.
Yeah, and that's fine, but as far as I can tell you, preliminarily, for the village residents, it's, I think, twenty-four dollars for, or twenty-six dollars for a state dog license, a state municipal dog license. And we just rounded it up to a key fob and dog license to a fifty-dollar level. So for fifty dollars, you'll get the key fob, which costs, which covers the cost of the key fob as well as a little bit, you know, additional revenue. So fifty dollars annually would be the cost to use the dog park and license your dog at the same time.
So if my dog's already licensed, what do I pay?
You just pay the fob, the fob price. Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-six dollars, whatever it ends up being.
And was it limited to, ultimately limited to village residents or?
We, we've only, yeah, nor, we've only had the discussion about village residents. It really, when we bring it up to the board, we can decide to do that and set a different fee or the same fee. It's really up to the board, but we can have that discussion at the next work session. There's two more work sessions to change those to make the decision on that.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Pindell?
The good work.
You guys saw the event, special events for everyone.
It's good.
Big job.
A good job.
Do we need Sandy to, we said, let Sandy go home?
Well, she might want to stay.
I have a community meeting.
We all want to go to that meeting.
So, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, Mr. On, Mr. On next? Yeah. Jeff, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for having us tonight. You all look wonderful.
Thank you for lying.
For yourself, I look good.
You can start. So to me, this is the most important part of this whole slideshow presentation. I have assistance department and labor, James Shorter. I have MEO, Michael Crystal. I have a small engine mechanic and labor, Jimmy Malon. I also have seven regular labors, Paul Caprilli, Enriquez Fuentes, Marco Kaltenco, Brian Broadrick, Jerry Schmidt, Dave Hernandez, Gennaro Bianco. I also am in charge of meter repair and maintenance, who is being built. I am recently in charge of our village electrician, Kevin Jamison. And we are in charge of cleaning the avenue, avenue maintenance, which is Stephen Frasier. I'd just like to start off by thanking those guys, because those guys are the ones who do the daily work and get the parks looking the way they do. Our daily responsibilities include daily garbage in all the parks, mail, water maintenance, and collectivity, building maintenance, electrical maintenance. We clean Merrick Avenue five days a week. We clean six Harbor Island bathrooms seven days a week, and we maintain thirteen parks across the village. We are responsible for a hundred and forty-four acres of grass, cutting and maintenance. Maintain four soccer fields, four baseball slash softball fields. Maintain Harbor Island Beach, spring plantings. We plant and maintain the hanging baskets on Merrick Avenue. We plant and maintain all the trees. In two thousand twenty-two, we planted two hundred and thirty-four trees in-house. Install donation benches in various village parks and additional projects as directed. There are a lot of fall and winter. We move leaves in various village parks and locations. We use that time to aerate and seed all of our playing fields in-house. We take care of seven twenty-four-hour locations with snow and salt. So that's firehouses, police department, train stations, and EMS. We also take care of five miles of total sidewalks with snow and ice. We assist the harbor master or dock building in the winter, and we set up and clean up for special events. Just some of the special projects we completed. We installed and designed the Poetry Garden with help from Cynthia and John Cox. We custom-designed the donated swing benches that are located on West Basin. We aerate and sealed, seed all of our fields. We recently created a mobile steam cleaning truck, which I've been going after Jerry for a couple of years now to try and get a bigger water tank setup, which cost a lot of money, but he said you could do it. So with one hundred and fifty dollars and a couple PVC parts, we created a mobile steam washing truck for graffiti removal and park cleaning. Recently, we did a field restoration on Crowe Soccer Field, where we stripped and re-level and re-seeded the whole entire field, which we were allowed to shut down the field last fall to let the seed grow. So that was good. We rebuilt two thirty-four Stanley, the community center, from flood damage from Ida. We are about ninety-nine percent of rebuilding volunteers firehouse from Ida. We had the holiday drive-through event. We recently re-pointed and re-cemented the bricks and retaining walls located here at one sixty-nine Mount Pleasant. We recently took all sprinkler maintenance in-house. We do that all ourselves now. We run our own lines.
We flush the.
We flush the lines. We work on all of our lines. We replace all of our heads. We don't go outside no more.
Change sprinklers if they need.
We do it all. Anything that has to do with sprinkles, we just do in-house. We do all of ourself. And recently, we've trimmed all the trees on Merrick Avenue in-house.
Oh, so Jeff, I want to stop you right there for a minute. So training, the training that the Parks Department received was for a donated volunteer day from Bartlett Tree Service. They came in with their equipment and their tree trimmers, their expert tree trimmers, and trained staff. So now staff had received prior training from me a little bit. But I just want to acknowledge that Bartlett Tree Service was very generous in bringing in a crew to train our staff for a day. In addition, I just wanted to add that Mr. On will be overseeing the mitigation project in the Building Department that I explained a couple of days ago, where we have some extensive rehabilitation there in the Building Department because of what we found. So Jeff will be responsible for overseeing that project as well. Thanks for letting me cut in.
And then there's been some pictures of some completed tents we've done over the past couple of years. Let me go to the next slide, Dan. That's the picture all the way on the right is what the firehouse looked like after Ida, and the picture on the left is what it currently looks like now.
Wow.
We went with a full, about ninety percent watertight building then. So if we ever get flooded again, we're not looking at a total restoration. We're looking at a remediation. Go in with a couple fans, couple dryers, clean the floor, wash the walls, and the firehouse is back up and running within two or three weeks instead of almost two years.
A significantly lower expense.
Yes.
Yes, and I do want to add, I'm cutting in again, but I do want to add that when Jeff, because I was only there for maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, when Jeff gave the FEMA representatives a tour, because obviously, this was a, this was a big project, and it really got their attention because of the numbers. They were so thrilled that we added mitigation to the restoration of the project, because that means that they're not going to have to shell out what they're shelling out once again. So
Right.
it was a big deal.
And then, so a quick little picture of us trimming the trees on Merrick Avenue this year. And that little picture is our brand-new water truck with a gas-powered pump, so we could handle all the steam cleaning and tree watering this year at a little bit of faster basis. And just a little picture of some rod cleaners.
Now, I did notice that this year, in years past, all the hanging baskets bribed all through the season.
I'd like to thank Jerry for teaching us the plantings a few years back.
And you know why? I know that's important.
We have, we have tricks of the trade, Mayor, that we now employ, so.
When I ran for trustee in two thousand and four, there were dead hanging baskets, and I took pictures of them, and I put them on my campaign flyer against the other guys. I'm always very aware.
Hopefully, you can't do that anymore, so I'll just be doing it myself.
I just throw those baskets out, Jeff.
These are just a couple of pictures of the renovations at one sixty-nine. As you can see, the far-left picture, those were the stairs for numerous, numerous years, and those are the current stairs today. And then just a picture of some bring, for a point.
Amazing.
And then I just want to say thank you to Jeff, the harbor master, Jason, Jason's staff, and Kristen. We have a very, actually. Uh, we have a very actionable team down there at the harbor. And we uh, we work very well together. We bounce ideas off of each other. We help each other out whenever possible, and I just wanna, wanna give them praise too.
You know, and, and that was not always the case. And uh, I, I, you can see it in how well things are going down there. And I wanna thank you all for being team players.
Um, if anybody has any questions about my budget.
Well, there's a question about the, the train station. What do you do with the train station?
So we take care of, from the platform all the way to Jefferson Avenue Bridge. And then underneath Jefferson Avenue Bridge around the back. So we take care of all the snow and ice there, and we also take care of the hill that leads up to the train tracks.
And does the N T A um?
Yeah, we, we have a nineteen, Lou, we have a nineteen ninety agreement with them. They give us the taxi, the taxi stand's location.
Yeah.
Um, and we're allowed to sell taxi licenses on their property. And for that trade-off, Jeff are responsible for the Holstead slope and underneath the bridge.
Okay, right.
Yep.
Good trade. Uh, any questions for our friend, Mr. On?
And, but, but back to the M T A, I'm sure you get that cleaner faster than the M T A would. They, they go, have to go from community to community.
Every third Tuesday of the month.
No, but I'm saying, like, oh, oh, cleaning.
Oh, snow, yeah, that, so we, our first stop is P D. Then one crew breaks off to do firehouses, and then one crew goes to the train station. Because it's, it's, it's just so busy with commuters at all times at night. You, you never want that filled up with snow and ice, so.
Since this is the ramp going up to the main?
No, so where the tax, the end of the taxi stand is.
Oh, okay, that ramp, yeah.
The, the sidewalk going down towards Diamond Car Wash around and around the back.
Oh, that, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Mostly our people. It's mostly residents. Yeah.
A lot of people who walk from that part of Rynick.
Yes, yeah, I, I agree.
Welcome back.
Jeff, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me see. Who's next on the uh?
Jeff.
No, it, it. I went out, turned to get Jason's old friend, so I don't wanna get anybody knew. Uh, Kyle's next. No, uh, take, somebody give some Kyle a seat. Okay.
Chivalry is not that.
You know which one, Jeff, I like.
You, you're known for doing movies. You're worried about a slideshow? Alright.
Okay, so one good thing, um, so I chose more to um kind of because more Jerry likes to joke with me that nobody knows what I do down there, so. I like, I just wanna, yeah. Um, so we're just gonna kinda go through a little bit what I do down there, and then um if you have any questions. So, the Marine Education Center, obviously our mission is um I'm different from every department. I'm more education-based, uh based on the Long Island Sound. So our mission is to uh develop and deliver hands-on marine programs for schools, general public, and um just walk-ins as well. And we're stewards of the Long Island Sound ecosystem and the local marine environment. Um, and I'm growing every year in terms of I'm trying to do more citizen science projects. Uh, and we'll get more into that a little bit, but all based on the Long Island Sound, so it's cool for especially um Westchester. I've gotten all types of groups coming down now, um that they get to learn about uh an extrary, which a lot of people don't know about, so. Um, so, yeah, so the Marine Education Center invites both longtime residents and newcomers to explore developing programs, projects, exhibits. Um, exhibits, if you haven't been down, which I don't know a lot of you have, um, the Marine Education Center has uh four two-hundred volunteers, a fifty M untouched tank, um, and then a bunch of smaller tanks that exhibit all the animals that come right from the harbor, so everyone gets to see. And admission is free. Um, the picture on the right is the new camp, so we're doing a lot of different programming this year. So in the um, at the Marine Center, our, our programming is all over. Uh, but I do outside camps, so I do Beach Point Yacht Club, uh Sheldon Drake, uh Yacht Club. Um, and then a bunch of all the other camps that I go out to, but I'm trying to bring a camp into the center. So this is the new one, the Marine Explorers Camp. So I'm trying to, I'm playing around with it through weeks, um, but basically that's, so that's a camp season. Next week starts, elementary schools start coming down, third grade, um. And then fall is all high schools from around Westchester, so a lot of field trips. And outreach programs, um, which is, so I do daily programs as well, which is twice a day, every day, and outreach.
Yeah, but you used to.
Twice a day, every day.
Twice a day.
Day, every day. So those are programs that um people can just sign up with me and they could do feedings and muscling and stuff like that to get a little more hands-on at the Marine Center and do feedings at the Marine Center, so. Uh, so these are just, again, some of them. And then this year, um, a lot of you guys probably don't know. We also have a bunch of, I think Jeff is probably the only one that knows. I'm doing oyster restoration in the harbor. Uh, we have two big oyster beds. So I'm restoring the oysters with Cornell and Rutgers, um.
Making like those uh.
We have stat, uh, which is baby oysters, and I'm growing them right now in uh different parts of the harbor to see if solidity changes. I won't bore you guys too much if you have any questions about that. But we're growing them, and then the, we're gonna start growing them in our natural oyster beds that we have in the harbor already. Cause they're declining because of um a disease that, it's called H S S. Um, but these ones from Rutgers are actually resilient to that disease, so we're growing those right now.
The oysters and the muscles help clean the water, right?
Yeah, yes, so they're filter feeders, yeah. Anywho, um, and then uh we're also doing a basic species removal, which we've done um very good job at one spot in the harbor. Now the silver crabs are back and the eel grass is coming back, so that's good. And then a bunch of other citizen science programs, so we're like moving onto that citizens. Lots of, lots of volunteers, lots of interns, so it's a lot of fun. Gets everyone involved. Which is great. And I do, yeah. So about five hundred people a day usually during my summer.
Cool.
Yeah. Depending, like, I'm not at the center directly, but like the village camp, I think it's like two ninety-four or something like that. And then I go out to other camps and that's about three hundred.
Who, who drives the traffic to the um, uh, the Marine Center? I mean, uh.
That's me, I'm a one-woman show.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, no, I um, you know, I put a lot of uh flyers out and stuff like that, but yeah, I've signed.
Social media.
That social media, yeah.
You, you work with the schools, obviously, and, and the libraries?
Yep, library, the library and I have a running um summer program, actually. Quite some month, every, every. Uh, in the summer. It's a summer reading program, but they come out.
Oh, good, good, good.
Yeah, and then New Rochelle as well. New Rochelle is a big supporter as well, and Harrison um just got on board with their elementary schools this year, and then uh New Rochelle added two more elementary schools for their visiting.
And um, uh, alright, uh. How many programs have you done so far in like this fiscal year?
Uh, this fiscal year? Gosh, uh, I can't tell you because I don't have that in front of me. But I think last year was probably I wanna say fifteen. This year is probably gonna be about thirty in terms of just schools visiting um during their school time. I, I, I'm not including, yes.
Those are outside uh um uh entities contribute to the uh, the recent of it all?
They will, there's a fee to come.
Okay, good. I think, I think.
Yeah, and a lot of scout, yeah, and Nora knows very well. She's, I do a lot of uh I think it's what easy to uh Daisy. All types of scout groups, and those were all throughout with her, and I'm not including those. I don't, there's too many. Yeah, so.
And birthday parties and.
Birthday parties, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I do the high internship program as well, so I have um Scarsdale, Tuckahoe, Eastchester, um, American and mine. So they send us about five. I only took five this year. I took eight last year. I know, eight was a lot, but five this year, um, I had to turn a lot of people away, which is upsetting.
Hey, Kyle?
Yeah.
You have a nonprofit friends group uh that, that supports you a little bit? Maybe explain to the board a little bit about um, what our plans would be for that.
Yeah, so the Friends of the Marine Education Center is, uh, just became a five oh one C three. Um, George Oppenheimer, which probably a lot of you guys know, got me that status, um, and he um, well, then Helen Rafferty is a big, she's the head of it. Uh, they just became a five oh one C three, so they're gonna try to do a lot of the fundraising. Obviously, I can't do fundraising, um. So they're fundraising for a new touch tank and um an outside building where I can possibly hold winter programs. Cause right now, if I were to, I had about twelve people ask for winter birthdays. I can't hold people um, in the center. If you haven't been down to the center, I can't hold people in the center. Uh, which the minimum is twenty kids, or max is twenty kids, uh, so this outside building will help me like expand my winter programming, and they're helping with funding that kind of stuff.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's very important and uh very unique, I think, but everything about the Marine Education Center and Kyle is very unique. I still don't know what she does, but she does something all day.
This is, now you kinda know what I do now.
This is a full-time job.
Yeah, I think more than. I think I work uh almost seventy.
Seven?
Yeah, I have weekend stuff.
Well, she's, she's there every time I go by.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have discussions about that, Leilani, all the time.
No, sorry.
No, 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 I'm, I'm.
I have staff starting next month, so.
Yeah, but, but we have had discussions about that, and I don't, you know, I want her to take some time every once in a while, but she's, she's not that way, so it is what it is. I appreciate the dedication, I really do.
Yeah, I, I do.
No, I mean, it's not really.
Is there something, it's not in your budget that you wish was?
Um, no, I think I went over, I've gone to Jerry a lot and everything.
Yes, I mean, is nothing that you would do?
Any enhancement?
Nobody else is driving.
Who else got asked that question?
So, I. Uh, no, right now I think we're kind of, I'm kind of with I, what I put in the budget, I think, is what I can deal with in terms of, it's just me for most of the time. So it's, I can't really expand it too much until, and it's not like the village at all, it's accounting until I can get a second person.
When do you open an origin?
Um, starting next month, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we are, we are somewhat focused on uh the fundraising that the friends group does, cause we wanna appreciate their efforts and really um you know, provide value with the, with the, with the money that they raise for us, so I'm hoping that we do um, you know, we do some good things with that money.
This is, this is one of the things that clearly separates us from our surrounding communities.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the many, I don't wanna, I mean, sorry, I mean.
One of the obvious things.
Anyone's welcome to come down.
Four's redone, that's complete, right?
Yeah, just completed. Uh, the only thing I'm waiting to get fixed fixed is the touch tank that kinda messed up on the transition from moving it out of the Marine Center, so that will be fixed next. But, yeah, there, um, the floor is, it's gorgeous. Everyone comes in, I think, to just look at the floor, but it looks completely different. It's an actual building now.
And Kyle will be getting a, a proper marine education vehicle uh soon, as soon as it comes in, cause right now she's using an SUV and well, just.
Nobody will wanna use.
Which we affectionately call it the fish mobile.
I use it during one of the storms.
It was like, I think I smell like fish now. The smell is really bad. I was like, Jerry, who are you giving this to?
Awesome, Kyle.
Yeah, and if you guys have comments about anything on the.
Can't keep up with the work.
Thank you very much.
I'll be down with my bagel on a Saturday.
Okay, that's good. Next month, I'll.
Nice. The next up is uh the harbor mess, the Jeff, how you doing? Jeff LaRusso.
Good evening, Jeffs. I think uh.
Dan, Dan, the screen that I see is the Parks uh novice screen with the uh, okay, you see that now. Thanks, Ben. Mr. Harbor Master Low Talko, you're gonna have to speak right into the microphone.
As if you were hailing another ship.
That's right, that's right. I can, I've heard him speak loudly. Don't worry about.
Better be boarded.
Yeah.
Okay, so good evening, I'm uh Jeff LaRusso, I'm the harbor master. I'm also the supervisor of the day constable in Rayburn. This, I'm gonna get ready to start my eighteen season with them. I have one office assistant, Christine Cheezer, that's my right hand for all my office administrator stuff. She's great. She handles everything in the office. And my labor position is currently open, and my assistant harbor master is currently open. I do have my labor starting on Monday. And also a system employee starting this week. Cause I am a little bit behind from being short of labor, a little bit behind schedule this year to get everything opened up. We should be good once I get those two plates on Monday. We'll be able to get it on and get everything ready. I have to thank Jeff, cause when, again, he lets me borrow a guy here and there when I have to fill a dock or something to keep me going, so. Appreciate that, Jeff. So my responsibilities are uh to ensure that everybody who's enjoys the Navy Awards from America uh manage all the administration and rotation of uh board, and that's all the warrant fields. Uh, oversee all the public in transient warrants, so we get, you know, transient guys that wanna come in and out, so we have to make sure they're available. We are responsible for about nine miles of coastline. That's just the immediate shore. Uh, the arena has fit uh four hundred and fifty-five slips and two hundred and seven warrants within American Harbor and also a section of Archmont Harbor that's also.
Was that by Flagler Drive?
Flagler Drive, it was called Satan's Town.
Satan's Town.
That piece that's, that is the side of the Lysic. Uh, so you know, we just maintain all the records for all the registrations, insurance, make sure everybody has the, the right insurance for spill coverage and wreckage and that stuff. Everything's outside again, that's principal, she does a great job of that. Then we also work with other agencies, uh Homeland Security, you know, we'll get calls for, you know, maybe suspicious commission, which I, you know, go to the police and we work with them on anything, you know, that has to do with that. Special events, they might be having a drill or something that we have to do a security zone around or something like that, or you know, a couple of years ago, there was a fire, they had fireworks in Archmont, all through breakwater, which is the village of American. And then during the display, the mortars tipped over and were actually shooting towards Manor Park, so we had to go out. Set up a security zone, we actually had a clover barge, you know, turn, turn the barge so that they were going out over the water and not patting out. So that's uh.
That's what I'm due. We could take them.
So our office timeline, cause everybody thinks that we're kind of slow in the winter, and that's actually, you know, one of our busiest times. It's been doing all the milers, so you have, you know, something gets to a year or two. In January, they go out right after the holidays, so we don't wanna send them out before that, so they don't get in with junk now and that kind of stuff.
Christmas clothes.
So we wait until the first week into January, they go out then, and then almost immediately they start coming back. And they're still coming back now, you know, our season's gonna start soon. And then almost immediately, they start coming back, and they're still coming back now, you know, our season is gonna start soon. We still don't have a ball back, so we're still getting people every day to come in every new, for whatever reason. So from January up until probably, you know, just about August, we're getting renewals. And then that's when the the deadline for refunds is in July, so somebody after July, I don't refund anybody anything. They want to refund, they have up until July. And then August, we start to corrorate the slips, because that's about the halfway mark of our season. So from August till November, every every month, it gets corroded down. And then September, the office cycle starts all over again, just like Kristen has to start preparing again for the next season, showing up for the decals. Other responsibilities that Kristen has in the office is she helps me do the daily walk-throughs, because sometimes I'm out on water doing something and she walks through the marina quick and just make sure everything is in order and. And good. Uh she has it with the uh allocation of dock, you know, and and mornings. If she'll help me, you know, line up everything, I'll get to that in a little bit.
I just ask you a quick question about morning. You know exactly, like when you, when a spring happens, right, and you put the mornings in, you just know. How do you know exactly where to put that morning?
We we made up a chart, which we didn't have before, with Kristen and I. Over the morning fields over and over again, marking everything and.
So this one is, there's uniformities.
This way, you gotta try to get everything treated out, because I mean, every year you get boats that drag the mornings a little bit in the windstorm or something like that.
Right, right.
Drags, they have to be moved around and reset, so.
And what did it, would would, how do they, how do they anchor, how 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 heavy is the mushroom anchor?
Yeah, and it's it's for the inner harbor, because you're on two anchors, it's ten pounds per foot. Because you're on two. Okay, so. You know, the outer harbor is a little bit different, because you're only on one. So it's a, it's a higher ratio, so for like a thirty foot boat that we have, we need an eight hundred pound mushroom.
Okay, so there's a formula for it, thank you.
It also uh takes all the reservations for the transient and uh. We also do um the Clean Vessel Act. So that's a a grant that we put in for every year with the state that we get reimbursed for the pumpouts. So it's a maximum two thousand dollars per pumpout, we have two pumpouts, one of these facing one of the westies. So last year, I tried to put most of that maintenance in-house instead of pulling in a plumber all the time to do it or something like that, we did most of it in-house. And uh we got the full four thousand dollars when we were for each, you know, for the two pumpouts. Because we kept good records and everything was in order and we did it all in-house, thank you to Laura and all you two, because they had to break down. Everybody's salaries, fringe benefits and all that, so I can put in for that, so we got it.
Oh, go back, if you can, go back to that other slide, the very bottom. I'm not sure if that's accurate, performs other work tasks as assigned by the Harbor Master or Village Manager. I don't know about that part, I don't know, you guys are, you guys might not be, I don't know, I don't remember ever giving you any additional tasks, Chris. About that.
But but what they're telling you is they they need extra work.
That's what they're saying, well, Jeff, who did this PowerPoint, you?
No, I did not. I definitely didn't have. So I was, some of the enhancements that we've been doing since I came on board, um started to make customer service a priority, because that was one big complaint that we were getting. Is that everybody was always booing, had an attitude down there. But the one thing I've been trying to concentrate on is making it a more pleasant place. Uh that people want to come to. So far, we've rebuilt eighty-two uh docks. Uh various sizes, most of them are six five twenties, we did do a couple of other ones. Uh we built four new kayak docks and racks, and we also just completed uh a new rack by the boat ramp. When do you, when do you.
Project that all of the uh docks will be new?
Um not this next winter or the winter after.
Great, because they look so much better, you know, the, yeah.
That's amazing progress.
It really is.
Yeah.
Was that, I don't know, was it thirty years since the last?
Thirty years.
Back in the eighties, huh?
There there has been ones that were changed in between, but. Uh we established an early access and late access uh for up to four weeks. On each side of the season to try and extend the season for the boaters. Because the guys that fish, those are the best two times of the year to fish, or. Uh now, you know, for this time of the year and then. For. And we did try, we figured the free line of seems to be in line with more of the marinas, how we do it by the foot, instead of just having these random charges for different boats. Uh and we're able to support, you know, other departments with the use of the crane, right, because we have the crane now, so Laura's got some pictures of the docks that we built.
They, you you build them in the area, like between you and Jeff, in that in that area there?
Build them in the garage.
Oh, in your garage?
And then, you know, we put them outside and then depending on what's going on, we gotta push them into Jeff's garage and deck them in that one, and we'll start building another one in the other garage. It all depends on how it works out.
And then you you lower them through water with the crane?
So go back to the more similar charts that we have made up. So, you know, there's some uniformity and, you know, they're actually numbered, so we can keep track of them. And what we also did is we color-coded them for the morning contractor that's responsible for it. So if we go out and look at it and we see one that's off, we know right who to call, right when we're out there, we do. Call him while we're out there and give him the GPS numbers and say, you know, it's here, it's gotta be moved, you know, to a different spot. So that that wasn't a close one. So this is kind of some of the prep work that we do in the winter, moving the gangways, that's, you know, picture the. Docks going in the water with the crane. And that's what they're like when they're assembled. And then the boat ramp, cleaning the boat ramp is just a never-ending ordeal with the river and the stuff coming down the river. Uh that was after just the little rainstorm that we had on some one summer day, you know, that's what the ramp looked like the next morning. With everything floating down uh floating down the river. So, you know, we have to pull that stuff out and, you know, the big stuff there, we get the crane to take out. And the next one is uh other emergencies that we deal with is, you know, you get boats that sink. Uh so that's a deal with that. And then just some other, we we had to frame up at the dam. Over the summer, that was another, next picture is another dumpster that was taken out by the train station, that was underneath the first. And then flooded the river out by Ian and that's and there's more of the grade to build that. The next, our next biggest thing that we deal with is navigating the navigation. So the picture on the right is we got a call for people hitting something in the fairway in the east face. But I took the boat out and we drove around, so the picture on the right is what it looks like on sonar. Once we grappled and hooked it and dragged it over to the land, the picture on the left is what it was.
True.
That came down the river.
Wow.
No one saw it.
No one saw it, it was submerged, so you couldn't see it, so. We had a, we had a grapple for.
Waterlogged, right?
Yeah, waterlogged, so we had a grapple for.
What was this?
Uh that was uh not last summer, the summer before.
Massive.
You ever have anything float into the harbor that becomes a, that a boat will hit, or, you know?
Yeah, well, that that was one of them.
That was one of them, yeah.
There's still allegedly a car missing to light it, that they think is somewhere in the east face.
A car?
We can't find it, a car. You know?
Yep. There's still a car missing, I forgot about that.
Where where did it, uh where did it disappear from?
I I heard it somewhere down by uh. Valley or one of those streets over there, but it's. I've driven around to sonar, I couldn't find it.
Well, was it a, the person reported as Lamborghini?
No, no, I think, Mayor, I think I have the police report, I gotta dig it up, I gotta dig it up.
I had my Picasso inside.
The next one, this is the revenue. I also want to bring up that doing the dock building house would probably save at least four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But building the docks in house opposed to ten thousand.
Yeah.
Having them built by somebody else.
And they look great.
Yeah.
You sure you're using the right kind of wood?
Bust chops, so, so, so Jeff, Mayor, if I could, Jeff, can you go back to the revenue page?
Yes, sorry.
There's one item that we've discussed with the board, but um we don't have that in there, because we still don't have. Our uh final conclusion from the attorneys, correct?
Yes.
Right, so go ahead and discuss a little bit about the um. The A two hundred twenty ninety line. Where your harbor fees are expected, your harbor miscellaneous fees are expected. Uh to go up to seventy-six thousand, which is a big jump, but then also talk about that other item a little bit, if you could.
So the. Uh if we do boat storage down the harbor.
Yeah.
There's, there's a need for it, um there's a few marinas in the area that are undergoing big projects on land during winter. And they're not going to be able to take boats for storage, you know, a lot of them are our residents. That aren't gonna have a place to put their boats. Um so there's. Gonna be a need, and I know we don't have a whole lot of space. Down the harbor for it, but uh that that could definitely be a big revenue stream.
Um where where are we gonna put it? Probably in the parking lot, right?
In the parking lot, yeah, in the boat trailer spots, or the boat spots.
The double spots.
Yeah, to fit two boats in each spot and then just run a fence down each side of it, etc.
Makes sense.
So, and what was the other thing, Jerry?
Yeah, but but on, and Jeff, just in that regard, we had to keep that out of the um. We had to keep that out of the um. The revenue uh calculations, because we don't have uh Bob and Mary's uh. Decision on on, you know, the exact process, so we couldn't include it. Um and the other one was uh Jeff, the Harbor Master miscellaneous fees that are going. Um from uh about twenty-eight thousand. Uh adopted in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget to seventy-six thousand requested and tentative in the uh. Twenty-four, twenty-five, but uh twenty-three, twenty-four budget. You see it right in the middle of the page?
It's a A two hundred debt turn on the.
What do we attribute that to?
Yes.
That that is, that is the parking, right? I'm trying to think back.
Yeah, that's the, the, I'm, I think that's the part you put for the charter.
Oh.
Right, we have a charter, we have some kind of a charter, somebody or rather, right?
Yeah, sound down.
We didn't have that in the past, or or I think we. We completed the contract with them in twenty-two, but we never booked the. We we never had the opportunity to put the revenue in our budget, because it was post-budget, post-budget adoption, I think. Right, so if I recall correctly, is that like thirty or forty thousand dollars?
It was something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
How did, how did that work out? I mean, with with.
It worked out great, he was, he was happy, everybody was happy.
Yeah, and so people came, people came into you, you use a charter?
Yeah.
Is it, is there um, are there other charters that want to come?
I just have a place to put them.
Oh, I see.
Because he right now uses an offshore dock.
Yeah.
Which, you know, he would, he would pay a substantial amount more if he can get a gangway straight down to that dock.
Yeah.
Because then he wouldn't have to move the boats around, it'd be a lot easier for him to board all the people, tractor everything. Right now, he has the boats on, I'm floating more than what we have on two point ones. And then he drives the boat around to the east face and picks everybody up at the boat ramp and then goes out.
I I'd love to see an evening sight to, you know, evening.
An evening group.
He also has two boats in there, he has big eighty foot boats, I would love to get those boats, I just don't have.
Is there anything we can do to, I mean, can't hit the harbor.
I mean, sometimes that would be the county pier.
Not this year, but maybe in the future.
Yeah, that would be, that would be terrific.
That would be terrific.
I was gonna, oh, are you finished? I don't wanna. I was gonna ask you all, Spatys, the the transient boaters, I mean, how how many of those do we have?
We don't get too many, it it depends on the year, and it depends on the availability, because like if I have, if the launching ramp is really busy, which the last year it was on the weekends. That's the only spot that I have for transits. So if the launch ramp is really busy, I can't rent it out to a transit, I have a lot of boats.
I see, I see.
What we, I was thinking about trying to do is maybe get a couple of mornings and just set them, you know, in the outer harbor and we can rent those. As a transient one, but then you would have to either shuttle the people back and forth in. Or if they have a a tender that they can get back and forth.
Well, if you had enough of them, you could, you would make it worthwhile, um the uh and so you know, and you have to reserve it in advance, you don't take walk-ins, for instance. Somebody who just wanders into into the harbor.
If if the ramp is is slowly low.
Yeah.
Because it's good money to to get a transit.
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice to 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 make the community a um.
Destination.
A seaborne destination, the people from from Long Island. Come over and spend the afternoon and or, you know.
A lot of our transits now are guys that they come over and actually play golf. And they come over, use park, you know, at the dock and then go up to Winfler or one of them.
Yeah, you see, you see them on the train with their golf, I mean, that that would be, yeah, yeah.
So, are people allowed to stay on their boats in the harbor?
Yeah.
Overnight?
Overnight, yeah.
Yep. They have a code for the gate.
Yeah.
Ma- Mayor, if if I can ask Jeff just to touch a little bit about his Harbor Master supervisor responsibility and maybe some of the information. Uh regarding, you know, some of the situations uh that you guys resolve while you're out there, I know you do patrols. But every once in a while, I'm told. Um about certain things that you do, so if you could just touch on that a little bit, Jeff.
Well, a lot of times when we're out on patrol, we get, you know, we'll get calls for, a a lot of this hazards in aviation where we have to work with the Coast Guard. And stuff like that to bring, you know, boos back on station. And uh stuff like that, then we'll also get, you know. I've helped Kyle with birds that were in distress. So, I mean, that's the thing I love about this job, is you never know what you're gonna get into, it's different every day, the beach, the rain. Yeah, yeah, the the swim lines for the beach, water rescues. Then sport rescues, we've had a lot of that.
Wait, you were called out for missing kayak, or I think, unfortunately, a couple of months ago, right?
I was involved in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
No, now.
Oh, that was, oh, yeah, you.
Was it during the storm? Yeah, that was out, so we were out there in that storm looking for.
Yep, it was during the storm.
Yeah.
So. It's a, it's a.
He made it to Long Island.
That it.
Trip back and.
It was a night.
That was during night.
It's, it's one of those things that that we handle, but. Not too many people um are aware that we handle those kinds of things and and it's not, it's not that far away. Uh to the shores of uh, you know, Long Island, so. There's a lot of activity on our side of the sound, well, in between us and Long Island, there's a lot of activity.
So we, that's crazy, but like prohibiting people to go out during like any type of.
Storm or dangerous condition.
You can't stop anybody, they have that right. You can advise and say, you know, we do that all the time when I'm on the police boat, you know, if you see a storm coming in. And we see people going out.
And we're not liable.
Can't stop them.
Okay. And you're also not gonna see everybody that decides to take a kayak out in bad weather, you're just.
See that. All the time.
I I I've been on a Long Island sun in a kayak, and, you know, just. In windy weather.
Yeah.
On a clear day, and it, it's really, it it, you could have a hard time coming back in, depending upon the direction of the wind.
But that day, we actually used the county's boat, because our boats couldn't handle that water, there there was thirteen, fourteen foot waves. Yeah, you know, while we were doing a search, you know, trying to do a search pattern in fourteen, it seemed isn't. Isn't easy, so.
In in your, because you've had eighteen years in in the harbor, what have you, what sticks in your mind about noticing um? Uh what have you s. What sticks in your mind about uh about um. Climate, about sea level, sea level rise, well, have you seen, have you seen evidence of it, and is there anything that that?
Haven't seen it, I mean. The sea wall, I don't know if it's the, you know, in the West Basin, that's probably the biggest thing that I see.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's the wall sinking at sea level.
Yeah, okay, so you you haven't noticed anything along it?
You know, big rocks like in the outer harbor or out there that used to be showing that aren't now, it's not, it's not that.
All right, and nothing along the coast, it's, okay, that's good, that's 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 that's.
I'm glad that you guys made it back okay, John, that. I mean, I, there's a lot of people, volunteers across our community that just uh risk their lives for.
There was a few years ago, I saved eleven girls that were.
I remember that, I remember that. How, how many years ago was that? It was more than five.
Stories.
What?
They were, they were, they were out of.
Six, it was.
Right.
It was six years ago, my daughter was not one of those, she was one of the sailors.
Yeah.
They called, they called it in.
I, yeah, we.
Me and a lot of the end officers. Me and a lot of the end officers, actually, old harbor master, took those eleven girls out.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. Yours.
Oh, any questions on the actual budget?
No, just so.
It's so funny.
Things that, that may have impacted the budget going forward.
It's so sad.
Anything, is there anything you wish were in the budget?
When it's second, somebody sounds like this.
Do I need to come back up there?
You didn't give a better presentation. It was well presented, it was well presented, it was all delivery.
Thanks, Chris.
And, uh, your, uh, your assistant, uh, you have a, yours.
Sorry.
You have a assistant harbor master.
Assistant harbor master, that position's vacant, I don't know if it's been approved by the county yet.
Yeah, I think we're still, I think Danielle's still working on that.
Yeah, so our concern when we, when we approved our end, I think that we approved our end of it, right, the assistant harbor master, I remember that discussion.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the budget, just waiting to.
Because our concern was that, that it, 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 when, in, in a difficult time. You're a may constable, you may not be, you know, we may, may need somebody back here too, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's a significant backlog, uh, civil service for new positions. And, uh, we have a few of them, especially a couple of Spanish-speaking titles that, um, we've asked the county to create. Uh, but harbor master, assistant harbor master and assistant naturalist are two, um. Are two positions that we've been, uh, trying to, um, get the county to approve for a little while now, so we've completed everything we need to do as far as submission. We're just waiting for them to, um, follow through on the process.
Okay. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Lewis?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all, you know, you, you're doing a great job down there.
Yeah, it really is great.
You can do it, Mayor, without each of us, like, we all work together really close and if one of us is not there, it's very hard to get all of our jobs done, so.
We had that one, Jason.
Good team.
Team, telling you. I ju- I just finished watching, uh, The Last Dance, you know, the, the, it's the Michael Jordan.
Oh, wow, that's so good.
Fun fact about The Last Dance, one of your parks employees is in episode four, I think.
Really?
Yes.
Who?
Jerry Schmidt.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was very, that, that.
You don't like it?
I don't, he can tell the whole truth.
Well, he told his truth. No, but you know what, he, he's, he's an intense, incredible guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen, I, I.
I'm not a Jordan fan. Bring back Richard Kill.
You, you, we, we have to go into executive session, but you, you all, Camille, hold on. We'll see no more.
Since we're talking about, uh, Michael Jordan, the romantic, like, um, the romantic cinema. Romantic cinema is, uh, airing, uh, Air Jordan. So you might want to go see the movie at the romantic cinema.
I didn't know, thank you, that's great.
All right, uh. You know, I, I just, I sent out an email today, uh, with possible additions in, uh, both revenue and to, uh. And to different programs, uh, would. Would you be more comfortable talking about it on Monday night, because we're gonna have to meet on Monday night? Or what do you want to talk about tonight?
Uh, uh, I haven't, I haven't looked at it.
All right, so let's, let's talk about it on Monday night. Because it didn't make it to the agenda. And we, we, we're definitely gonna have a meeting on Monday. But we're, we're gonna need the room for the. Executive session, so thank you all.
Thank you.
As my bartender used to say, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
Put the club up on the bar and said, Murphy? Murphy, you're done.
Yeah, I took some notes and I took some, I, I would just need to know who posed. Uh, but if you want me to stay, I can stay. All right.
I need a motion.
Some more.
No, no, let me, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with open meetings law section one oh five F. The medical, financial, credit or employment history of particular persons or corporations to discuss salary raises for non-represented staff.
It's all moved.
All in favor, aye, aye.
I got that, so if you just get the poses.
I'm gonna end this, actually. Jerry, do you want to call in, because I, uh, this is a public Zoom?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call into your phone, Danny.
Okay.
I'll call into you.
Good night, Laura, Laura, thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. Dan, I'm calling your cell phone now.
Thank you.
Yeah, did you, no, no, look at it.
What meeting is today?
There are others, great, uh, community fridge.
No, 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 what's in here?
Oh.
No, it's owning. Why don't we feel like all of them will just have the, every, the same?
You, you on, okay. Good evening, again, we're coming back from executive session. Uh, in executive session, the board took two votes. Uh, the first vote was to increase, uh, the salaries of elected officials, uh, by seven percent, this was based upon a request by, uh, the two judges. Uh, and the second vote was to increase, uh. The salaries of non-represented, non-union, uh, employees by the same, uh. The same. The same percentage as representative employees, which is two and a half percent. Uh, the first vote was four to one, uh, with trustee Lucas voting no. The second vote was four to zero, one abstention, with trustee Lucas abstaining. Uh. Thank you all, I'll, I need a motion to end the work session, so.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Good night, budger.
Good night, bye, everyone.